All you're doing is justifying why you're here. Please tell me where your plan's gone wrong. I haven't got all night, sorry.
Thank you.
Go on. I don't think the plan is wrong.
It's very big time.
I appreciate that statement, thank you. Let's move forward.
Back to training, we're in line with everybody else regardless of our philosophy and whether we need to train more, train less, or how we're getting the training. Those are things that as we grow and we go to the future, maybe that's something that we look at where we control, training is, you know, Scott, when you're doing the training class, what are the things you need to do? But you've got requirements, I mean, you've got expectations. We're going to train and we're going to cover these topics. So because it's controlled and we, as an organization, we need to make sure that we cover those kinds of things. I'm not saying our training's perfect by any means.
Not all of it happens in a classroom.
And it absolutely doesn't, and I agree.
You know that driver and EMT on the road, and I'll tell you what, Justin Mock, he can put an IV in, a moving ambulance, and you never feel it. Renee was the best ever.
Okay, let's continue.
Not all training happens in a classroom.
Totally, I agree with that.
14 hours of classroom time, but no credit for when they're actually getting the practical experience.
And that goes back to the 20 responses I could get from there.
Thank you, Dan, let's continue.
Let's go ahead and go on. Looking at the requirements for calls, which kind of goes in line if we're running on 20 calls and whether it's getting counted on the 14 or getting counted elsewhere, it's expertise or it's learning as you do that. So back to the same ones that we looked at, we have 20. Goshen has, basically, it's 10% of their call volume. Looking at their call volume for last year, it worked out to 12. The other three that have zero call volume here, you think, oh wow, why is that? They've got other requirements that we don't have as volunteers that, kind of back when we were saying if you're doing 96 hours of cruise shift, you're going to go on calls, they do it somewhere a little differently. Go ahead and go to the next one. Next one. Is they have additional volunteer requirements and they require their volunteers to be on shift in the station. We don't do that. Dexter's 48 hours per month for outside volunteers and they recommend, or they're encouraging 48 hours per month for their in-district volunteers and they are looking at making that as part of their standard. Lowell is 1 24-hour shift per week as a volunteer. Goshen is for 12 hours and Southland is 1 12-hour shift per month. So they have additional requirements that the individual actually, they have to be in the station to be part of the member. Kind of back to what you were saying, Steve, in mandating or requiring, they're requiring you to actually be there. And I don't know that any of these are stipend-supported, I don't know that question. So. Yeah. Let's talk quickly about alarms and kind of how this, this impact was. Go ahead. So for the last three years, this is our, our call volume. I'm not sure why the big jump from 16 to 17. I suspect that it has to do with our data change in the way we are actually capturing our information. Go ahead. But for the six-month period that we were talking about here, we responded to 487 alarms in that six-month period. 340 of them were EMS, just to give you an idea of the breakdown. 113 were public assists and we needed to work on that because there's a little more in that other than what it's just called public assist. And 34 were fire. We averaged 2.5 alarms per day. We had 54 times where we had two calls going on at the very same time and we had four times where we had three alarms going on at the same time in this six-month period. And we had zero times where we were not able to respond and cover the calls. I'm not saying that if it was a structured fire or something like that, we didn't have help or assistance or motor vehicle accidents, but we were able to respond. Looking at the 34 EMS calls, back to what you guys have been talking about as far as training, 235 of those are transport and every trans, and we average about 1.2 transports a day, that's three hours round trip, just like what Kristi was talking about. That's a lot of time in that box. Can we do a better job at capturing that and utilizing that time? Absolutely. Currently, it's not part of our program. That doesn't mean that we can't. So looking at white elephant in the room, the five that are no longer members versus the volunteers, the rest, or I'll call them active volunteers. So we look at the same period of that 487, the active or the rest of the volunteers responded to 332 calls, I'm sorry. The five that we're talking about in that six-month period responded to 84 and we had 56 or 12% of the calls, but we had no volunteer respond.
Mike, can you go to the next slide? You have a number next to five dismissed, how many, why is there not a number next to how many active volunteers you have?
We, that's the next slide. So, thank you for that. So currently, we have five paid personnel. We have a fire chief, we have a designated training officer, which was one of the things that was brought up in the SWOOP analysis, if you remember. We have three lieutenants, one on each shift. We have 11 active members and we have three new recruits at this point. And we have two members that are on leave of absence that are not part of that. And then, one of the things that improved the safety to our community and it has helped us in our response and our delivery system is adding the five part-time positions. A lot of the things that we've been talking about are individuals and some training, but what you can have is single role volunteers, which we have a lot of those. So you could have the paid person, back in the day before we went to this, you have a paid person, and all of our paid people are dual role, which means they're EMS-trained, actually, they're all paramedics, very good paramedics, by the way, because of where we live. It forces them to be. And they're also fire-trained. But they can be working with somebody that's strictly EMS and so when you're going on a fire, they got to, you know, wait until they get other fire personnel to come help. We don't have that situation today because all of our, our part-timers are dual role. And that's all I was wanting to say on there.
Okay.
I'm going to keep moving, then we can...
You want to, you want to keep moving just one more slide?
We are about there.
You're almost there, okay.
So we're two slides. And I just talked about that. So because of our increase in our, our part-time, that's allowed us to have dual role personnel. It has also helped us having the ability to run two calls, EMS calls, at the same time, or it could be fire calls. And then having a training officer on that's designated Monday through Friday has allowed us to expand the opportunity, not only for our volunteer training, but also for our paid staff training. Because one of the, the weak points that we had before in our paid staff training, they were always the instructor. This gives an opportunity for them to learn and expand their knowledge as well. And so to answer the question, Oak Ridge citizens are just as safe as they were prior to the five being dismissed.
On one slide, it said 11 active volunteers are the five people that got dismissed, part of those 11?
No, they're not part of that.
So...
They're, this is...
They could work like 500 hours in a quarter and not be considered an active member, active volunteer?
500 hours in... Yep.
That's what we were asked for.
If they showed up for calls and drills and participated in the fire department, they would be considered an active volunteer.
Thank you, I'll answer.
Okay.
Sorry. Thank you. That goes back to utilizing your time when you're at the station. And I don't want to get into individual scenarios.
So I actually am not quite understanding what the question was and what the answer was.
So, so the question was, he had listed five, or 11 active volunteers.
Plus three new recruits.
And I asked, are the five people that were dismissed considered in the 11? And he said, no.
Right.
And I said, well, if they could put in 500 hours in a quarter of volunteering time, how come they're not considered an active member?
I could, I just can't answer.
And he's about to answer it.
Again, this is an emotional deal and I understand people have...
It's not emotional for you because you're not vested here. You don't live here, he doesn't live here, he doesn't live here, and he doesn't live here. I live here. This affects my family.
So the question would be, you know, I could turn that question around. If they're spending 500 hours in a quarter here.
Volunteer.
Volunteering, why couldn't they get 14 hours of training?
They did get 14 hours of training.
Because they got trained from within hours.
Wait a minute.
That should count.
Wait a minute.
No, 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 it's not about, my question isn't about whether or not they're trained. My question is, how, how could a person work 500 hours and not be considered an active volunteer? That seems strange to me. That's pretty active.
Um, I assume we're talking about Paul and Melissa.
Yeah.
The hours that they work are on a stipend, so they're there.
Wait, 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 please, let him answer.
So, okay, majority of their, Paul has it for, for a while. But when you're working on the stipend, you're committed to the department. The idea is that you're there from 4:00 to 8:00 at the station and for the 24-hour period, any call that we go on, you're to respond. And for that, the department gives you a stipend of $100. So that's, you know, that's the catalyst of what brings them there. Or, you know, let's, we only do it for the money now.
Yay, that's very...
We need a timeout.
This is like grow up, man.
Hey, that's enough.
That is enough.
This is exactly why...
Chrissy, that's enough. Did you hear what he said?
I will ask that you all leave if you can't keep your tempers in control. If this is too personal, then you should leave now.
Can I say something?
Thank you.
Can I say something?
Yes, Dan, please.
When I look at the budget, now, how many years you been here?
Here?
Yes.
Um, this is...
Three and a half.
Three and a half.
Okay. Have you saved us any money in this fire department since you've been here? Because I look at it very much as the finances of our town, of this community that pays for this. And when I look at our problem with our finance, every year, for the million dollars that we put out to the fire department and the EMT, every year, since you've been here, have you showed us any savings in what you're doing?
This isn't a budget class, but I'd say, yes, we have. And I could sit down and show you in the budget where we've done some different...
Well, I'm on that budget committee. And I'm very much, I looked at it today again, and I looked at the audit. And I understand all this, just like I, I see what you put.
Today, I was talking about the requirement...
Exactly. I'm looking at Leo Robb, right here. Leo puts in 72, Leo Robb puts in 72 COGS, you know, calls, correct?
Yep.
Yes, okay. He's, well, that's what you put. So this individual, he seems to be really worked. Maybe some of his time can go to one of these other people over there. Would that be fair?
No.
That doesn't work like that.
Shh.
Okay. Let's not talk, we're not here to talk about the budget, although, Mr. Hadley, I appreciate that because it is important that we remember the numbers. Right now, we're here to talk about, about, you know, whether or not we are having adequate coverage that we have. I am not unaware of the fact that this is very personal and I don't mean to insult anybody, but this is not the venue to air individual and personal grievances. I want to get to the bottom of this and understand, as a counselor and as mayor, I want all to understand how this works. This is not easy to understand. You all even breathe this, I do not. So I would ask some consideration for us to be able to ask questions. Chrissy, you have a lot of knowledge and I expect you to help the council understand this and you have been doing that. So let us continue on with asking good questions. For me, my question is, is as much as I, as I understand the process in any organization of if you have a standard that you have agreed to and, and members don't meet that standard, then they shouldn't be part of the organization. I get that, that is absolutely fair and justifiable. However, what I don't quite understand is if you have a standard that is consistently being changed and revised in order to accommodate, because it isn't quite working and you're deciding it, that makes it even more difficult, I think, to hold your members to that standard because it's fluid. That concerns me. Not, it doesn't have anything to do with the individuals, the names attached, or how well-trained or not-trained they are. It's just that I want to see it held to an even standard. It's difficult, community, because we as counselors cannot tell the fire chief how to run his department. I cannot tell the city administrator how to, how to administer his department heads. We can express our concern and say, we don't like what's going on, or we really like what's going on, or we think everything's fine. So please understand that as we sit here and talk about this. Counselors, do you have questions?
I do.
Bobby?
It is what I've been thinking about for a while, so it's not related to all the recent conversations. For volunteers, can they go to outside trainings that are outside of our fire department? And receive credit for those? Yeah, can they, can they go to them and receive credit, or are we...
They can now.
Okay.
That's, that goes back to that 14-hour change.
So, so like for me, like when I was a state employee for DOJ, they would have, like DHS would offer trainings and a variety of things. So I could go to their trainings and get some of my minimum requirements for my job from one of their trainings. So is that something similar that can happen?
Yes, now.
For staff here, so...
And that's one of the adjustments that we've made as we grow in this process. You know, as a community, I would think that you would be concerned with a group that's not trained, or, or trained at a minimum level.
Like, yeah.
I don't mean not trained, but...
That's kind of an iffy statement. Chrissy?
Actually, in my past experience with Oak Ridge, Oak Ridge was great with outside training. They would pay for our classes. We could go get whatever class we want, pretty, within some financial cost reason. But since Mr. Hanson has been here, people are denied $25 classes, $40 classes. And I can't have those people come up here and speak to you.
You don't have to.
You have denied them, Eric has denied them. I'm talking nominal numbers, they are denied to go take those trainings.
Counselors?
The budget got cut for the five people.
Do you have any questions?
Not moving.
Stan, do you have any questions? Okay. And then some hands up here, so. Looking for people who haven't said anything, but okay, since we've all said something, let's fight the辩.
So I know you don't want to hear our emotional responses, but the three volunteers sitting in that row right there, all get paychecks from the fire department as well. So pointing us out that we are motivated by money is highly insulting to me.
I apologize.
Because I do not, I do this.
I apologize.
Right, thank you. Thank you.
But after that being said, can you go back to the pie chart, please? So those responses are, the blue is including 11 volunteers, not including the five of us that were dismissed.
That's not including the five of you.
So the five of us responded to 18% and the 11 responded to 70. And several of us five have 40, 50, 60-hour week jobs as well. So I don't think that's a fair assessment, personally.
That's, those are just, that's the data of what we...
Right, but you can skew it out to say what you want it to say and make it look a certain way.
Just because my question, my actual response goes with this pie chart.
Go for it.
I, for one, as an Oak Ridge resident, prefer my firefighters, citizen volunteers, to live in the city, to be trained by our firemen, and I feel 18% less safer today than I felt the day that they, when they were working.
All right, thank you for that comment, Chrissy.
Well, when you were talking about how our standards have stayed the same, but his plan has kind of evolved all the way until January of this year, I want to know, maybe Chrissy can answer this because I trust you more, how hard would it actually be to go back to, if, if somebody really has got 500 hours in a quarter, how hard would that be for him to track, to give them credit for that now? So since we know they actually did go on calls, there's got to be some way to actually show that they put in those actual hours.
So from running calls?
Yeah.
And pull a report on the VCR program.
And so it would be easy to give them credit now.
15 seconds.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead.
I just have a question as to, you keep talking about quality versus quantity and training and all of that. What's, of the volunteers we have in your row that you brought, what is their highest level certification compared to those that were dismissed? An EMR? And you dismissed an intermediate and a basic?
It is a big deal, it's a very big deal, it's a life-saving big deal.
Well...
We're giving... We do it for a...
I, I would like to know on this body that's here, how many of these volunteers and how long they've lived here?
I've been here three years, I work over 60 hours a week and I train more than all five of these people put together in three months.
We don't want to get in discussion about what...
I'm just saying, it's not that hard.
I went on...
It's not that hard.
You don't have children.
Right.
It doesn't matter.
It does matter.
Can't do 14 hours in three months.
Audience, counselor.
You should be ashamed to run it.
Mr. Bob?
Yes.
I've been here 30 years.
I know that wrong.
Paul?
We've been here for 10 years. I also have a question. Has the city lowered its standards on what they want for a fire chief? Because in the past, we've always had a paramedic fire chief that's also fire. And now we have a temporary that has been here for three and a half years, that's an EMR. That's the same rank as IM and all the lowest ones of people he didn't fire.
Okay, thank you. I, I appreciate your question and, you know, there is going to be a time when we are going to have to hire a fire chief and that is coming. And those are all things that need to be considered, but can I ask, answer that specifically? I really can't, I, but it's a good point.
I've been here 30 years, thank you.
Go ahead.
May I just read mine?
Yes, of course.
I, I try to get along with everybody and I tend to just watch and try to...
You're on the fire department.
I'm an advanced EMT.
Thank you.
The city paid for my training.
Okay.
Also a school teacher.
I'm, yeah, I'm a milk and work teacher and softball coach and other things. I'm involved in the community quite a bit. And it hurts me to see the department split up like it is. And I would like to read this. Oak Ridge City Council, I came to Oak Ridge in 1992 and began volunteering with the Oak Ridge Fire Department and EMS in 1993. I've been invested in this community and want what's best for it. The past year was my 25th year with the department and instead of receiving a letter of, "Thank you for your service to our community" type of letter, all I have received are two letters of, "You're not doing a good enough job and are about to be terminated." I got my first letter when they sent out all the letters. I had gone to Alaska to see my grandson. The next quarter, Jeff said, "You're doing great, you've exceeded it." And then this last quarter, I didn't have enough. And so I got another letter, but I did go in and meet with Hanson. Instead of a "Thank you for your community service," I received two letters, "You're not doing a good enough job and are about to be terminated," written by a coworker and not the chief, by the way, and made it very awkward. I told Hanson they should have been written by him and it should have come from him and made for an uncomfortable work environment. The training officer, Eric Tinkin, was at that meeting when I told chief that and he agreed. The sad thing is that we do have a 36-hour at my level, 36-hour minimum that the state says you have to have. And I've done over 65 hours of training, which is almost double that to be required. But of course, like you said, training matters. And in my opinion, the calls, when people are actively on a call, they discuss the calls when they come back a lot of times, lots. And so you learn from being on calls. I, I think that the calls need to count. The, it's a long, it's a long, it is long past time to have a permanent, actual paramedic fire chief. I was under the understanding that Hanson was hired as a temporary position while a permanent paramedic firefighter chief could be found. This has not been the case. Until this hire, all of my chiefs over the years have been paramedics who could and did respond as a paramedic to code 99s, which is no breathing and pulses, MBAs and fire calls. They all lived in town and were available. This is not the case. I haven't seen him at very many trainings with the department, which brings up how well does he know what's actually happening at the training? I got a call from Leo Robb, a friend at the department, calling to make sure I was going to, going in to meet with Hanson because he said, "I'd hate to see you let go." Why didn't I get a call from Hanson like that? After that call from Leo, I couldn't help but think, apparently the chief doesn't care if I'm around. He has never called me about coming in. I waited almost a week before I brought myself to go in because it was embarrassing. I feel like I try to do a good job, I'm involved in the community. Sometimes I'm not there, but other times I am. Please, please, talk to the part-timers who have been hired about what they think of the work environment at the department. I was going to give an example, but out of respect to their privacy, I won't. I would just like to say, please talk to Christian, Guy Harshberger, who is a retired chief from Dexter, he's on our paid staff, and Jeff. We need to change our leadership. My own daughter, who last year was a junior in high school, asked about starting to volunteer and be a cadet. I said, "No." I do not want her to be exposed to the poor work environment right now in the department. We need a change in leadership. There's a huge lack of trust with our current chief. With the whole conflict of interest that came up with the former city administrator and our chief, the boss being hired by the employee, I was surprised when Hanson wasn't terminated at the same time the city administrator was. Please set things right by getting an actual paramedic chief. I'm not usually one to make a lot of waves. I try to stay quiet and just focus on the job that has to be done. The council needs to know how desperately we need a change in leadership. The situation is critical. Thank you for your time.
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
When you, when you did make an appointment and go in and discuss it, were arrangements made so that you could continue on, or have you been dismissed?
Yes, and he was accommodating because he knew, I'm a softball coach and my softball season is starting next week. And he's made it to where I could come in for a training once a month to make sure I'm current with the proper equipment and to do training on the side electronically too. But I do most of my volunteering in the summer when I'm off. And so, and other times throughout the year, I typically do Monday nights. I would sign up over the years, but he was accommodating to help me to be able to do that.
May I ask you one more question?
Yes.
You obviously feel strongly about this and it probably has affected you emotionally. Why are you still doing it?
I care about the community and when I first started volunteering, I wanted to help people in the community. And it's worth it to me to go through this to get what's best for the people.
Thank you. Thank you for the answers. Any other questions? Yes, Mr. Jordan? Oh, David.
I need a little clarification on, just mark, mark your mistake. When these EMS go on calls, they're not getting credit for...
For the call time, is that correct? That is correct.
Yeah.
They're not getting credit time?
They don't get credit for the call time.
There's a phrase that's out in the, in the world, it's called on-the-job training. And when you are involved, because I've been involved, and it don't matter what the credit level is. If you're there and doing the job like these people are, and they're not getting credit for that, that's wrong. That's entirely wrong.
Thank you.
I agree.
Mr. Jordan?
Time for the dinosaur to speak. There's only four guys here that have been in the fire department longer than I have. There were three guys, actually. That one there, and this one that just spoke to you, and that one at the end. I was in there for 17 years. I retired in 17... That one there, this one that spoke to you, and that one at the end. I was in there for seventeen years. I retired in twenty-seventeen. I can speak to a lot of the things that have been discussed. The training doesn't change. Training is training. You're required to do it. The state requires it. How you manipulate it around is up to you. We've done it a whole bunch of different ways. We used to, at one time, would cut people like Dave slack. Dave has always been very conscientious of coming back to training and retaining his certification and so forth. We never suffered through that because we knew the situation as a teacher and all that. I don't quite understand the program that's here because I believe it's needlessly complex as far as the training program goes. And to give you an example, when I came in the department on an ambulance, we got paid by the hour if we were on a call. If we were on a transport, we got paid on an app by the hour. And that changed because the IRS said you can't do that. So it changes to a situation where you got paid on a fully number of hours counted as a call. Then they've changed to wherever they're at now. I still, I don't know where that now, but. If you, and there are a lot of things people mush together is the EMS and fire are two separate things. EMS is EMS. A lot of people, for instance, first responder, EMR, is not necessarily just EMS. I was a fire chief, so I was a paramedic and at that time that was what Scott is and that's what a lot of the other guys were. And I ran calls, but that doesn't account for what you hear now. I guess what I'm getting at to is there's going to be change. But the change has to be in such a way as it recognizes. I believe that the volunteer, if they aren't showing up for training, what I would have done is said, you can't go on any calls until you get your training hours. And therefore, you just don't get to go on any more calls. That's not the way that they saw to do that, but that's the way I would have done it. I think that, before I fall down, I think that, I think that maybe the, we've got more hostility. I think mostly the hostility is calculated here is because of the fact that there's been so much change in so short a time. We went from, we went through three, so when I got out as fire chief, we've had three different fire chiefs since then. And I retired in twenty, in two thousand seventeen. No, not seventeen, seven. Slap me on the side of the head and make me a safe fire. I guess what I'd like to say to the people that are here, I know you put a lot of time in. But when you commit to a call, you're committed, I mean to a shift, you're committed to that shift. And if you don't show up, that's your fault. Don't blame the fire department. You had a chance to be there. If you, once you make a commitment, you make a commitment. Particularly when you're looking at a driver-type position and so forth, because that, you can't run an ambulance with one person. As far as training on an ambulance, you don't train on an ambulance. Whoever saw that, you sit there and take care of patients. You might call a training, you can pencil-whip anything you want and just listen to what you want. If you're a driver, you're driving. There's no training there unless you dodge the traffic, go on a train. So now there's a whole lot of different things that have not been brought up to. I sense a lot of hostility here. The fact that they haven't got a new fire chief is definitely on the council. It's actually on the city administrator because the council doesn't have any authority to hire a chief or even discipline a chief. They don't have anything to do with a chief. It's not nice that your people are here presenting information, but the guy sitting right over there on the end of the table is the one who hires the chief.
Well, not really.
When we're going to get better. No reflection, Mike.
Thank you, Mr. Short.
I'll keep, I'll shut up.
No, you don't have to. You have more to say.
I can keep.
I can wait. I can hold my hand. I'm glad you spoke, Jerry. But, you know, I understand what everybody's saying tonight. And one of the things, I have Mr. Hanson's contract. I have our charter. You know, I have Messina's contract and I understand Rick is an intern because we just put him there.
Pro temp.
Pro temp. But I want to ask you something. Before you let all these people go, who did you get consent to do that?
I talked to city administrator.
No, you talked to the who?
City administrator.
And that is who?
Phil.
That's right. He's not, he gets paid by the hour. He's a pro temp. So before you did that, you should have went to this body and asked what was going on. Yes, you read the charter.
I would, I would correct you.
Well, you correct me here.
He is a city administrator and considered a city administrator.
In his contract, it's what? An hourly wage?
That is, that is.
And this is his contract?
That is Mr. Hanson's contract you're talking about.
No, this is, this is Mr. Messina's contract.
He is a city administrator and that is the ruling of the attorney.
That is, that is a what attorney?
We can talk about this.
Well, but that is, that is a fact. If he gets paid by the hour, he is a.
Contract.
Contract. The same, just like Mr. Hanson. And to be hired, he had to come from, to the council to be hired.
What you're saying is that he should have come all the way directly to the council and the council has no authority to hire, fire, or dismiss.
Yep.
By charter.
But we hire and he is a consultant. He is not a fire chief.
Don, go ahead.
Is this time for a public comment? I mean, is that what we're doing? Thank you. So I would like the council to consider that there's three sides to this issue. There's the management side, the volunteer side, and the legal side. I am sharing this stuff with you, all those pages that I gave you. One of them is the page from Michael B. Hanson's contract that states he cannot terminate staff or volunteers unless the CA decides it. I highlighted that part for you on that page. I've also included a page from our charter that states, in the event of a vacancy for the city administrator, the council shall appoint a pro temp for a period of no longer than six months. I highlighted that for you as well. And the pro temp has all the authority of a CA except that they may only terminate with approval of the council. Lastly, I have included Messina's contract for you. Also highlighted the important sections of it that says, he will abide by all municipal codes and laws of the city, the charter being one of them, contracts being another. It also states that Messina is a contractor and not an employee. It states that in his contract. Mayor Holston may try to tell you that Messina is an interim and that that is different than a pro temp. However, an interim and a pro temp are both defined as temporary. And the council could not have hired Messina for anything other than a temporary pro temp because that's what our charter dictates. Obviously, there are violations of all of these contracts. It may be best in everyone's interest to restate the volunteers, destroy the termination letters, and start fresh with the actual issue of training. You have to admit, he has been here for three and a half years and if he's only now getting around to ensuring complacency with training, it could be that dangerous to have, maybe I wrote, oh, it couldn't be that dangerous to have had these people working the amount of hours that they do.
So council.
Excuse me. I have a couple comments.
Yes, we have not spoken tonight.
Hey, my name is Don Christ. I've been here since nineteen fifty-two. This is the worst I've ever seen. I think you've got some issues you need to address and you can quickly take care of your problems. One would be that when you hire someone, they need to be members of the community. They need to be. Here, Don will attest to this. We have so many teachers in the district, they have no buy-in. They're gone in the evening. We have trouble now getting coaches. We can't get coaches. And it's the same thing should be with the city. You take that into account that they've got to be here and buy into things. They have to be part of the community. Another thing would be, I think you're missing a really important part.
Are you done with your presentation?
And Don, Dave has gone through this. It's all, you're talking about education. Regardless of what work you use, and you're still talking about education. One of the pieces that you're missing at the end is plans of assistance. Where before you terminate a person and it's built up to that, you can go as individuals through people that have the ability to train, identify the problems that the individual has, work with them, let them heal that up, and you move on. You cannot give up not only hours, but years and years. And family that have been here for generations, you can't just throw that away. So you've got to put another piece in that. What we're faced with, we're faced with old-school, new-school stuff. You know, to me, only to me, I don't like these. I like face-to-face confrontations, confrontation, face-to-face. And I think that's really important. You've got to do that. There was another issue. Oh, I know where it is. I happened to address this to you. I think you owe this young lady an apology for earlier when you said flatly, be quiet. I don't think that was proper. It hurt me. So that was it. That's all I've got. It's good meeting you.
I just got a couple of little questions. How many, you say you've got eleven active volunteers. How many do you have out on the, say you have a fire call. Take a minimum of five on a fire call. So what if you have another fire call and that's ten? What are you doing? Mutuating down to Dexter or something?
We would mutilate Dexter on the first call.
On the first call.
You should know that.
I do know that.
Okay.
Leading up to something. When I was, when I was in the department, we had twenty-one, twenty-five volunteers. I've never seen it at eleven. I don't know how they function on eleven, to tell you the truth. You can't depend all the time on Dexter to bail you out if it's a big fire. You're right. You do that to cover yourself. I had another question, but now, being somewhat seen, I don't know, forget where it is.
Elizabeth Barclay, I'm four seven four eight seven hundred and fifty-eight. After months of listening to the RAR, the candidates for council and mayor election, I was looking forward to what may have been the start of a year, the classification and leadership in Oakridge for two thousand nineteen. I'm totally disappointed in the antics that are still being allowed to continue in our community. The new promises of change, transparency, and action, which were promised to correct the previous administrations as of only until you got the votes. The termination of our EMT and firefighters was reprehensible. Access to healthcare is a bare necessity in the USA, actually anywhere. I am asking you, as a citizen, to remove Mr. Hanson for obvious reasons. It's prior work history and the ruin of our emergency services. But I'm not here to discuss my reasons that other citizens can do that because they have the experience. I'm here to tell you, all of you, that as a citizen of Oakridge, my concern is the health and safety of every citizen in this community, including myself. Oakridge is in a state of emergency. You all are our current councillors and you are all now responsible for the health and safety of every citizen in this town. In this matter, I ask one question. Who is brave enough to be the adult in this situation?
Thank you.
I'm just going to jump in on a public comment. I need help. Dan Barfle, same address.
Wait a minute, I live next door for four seven five one.
And just real quickly, all Messina, you call it pro temp, interim, acting, temporary, you know, here for the moment, whatever you want to call it. Let's not do semantics. Bob DeLonge was an interim city administrator. Even though interim does not appear in the city charter that we know everybody's read, pro temp, interim, it's the same thing. And if you read that, like Don said, a pro temp administrator cannot hire, fire, or anything else without council consent. So Mr. Messina and the former city administrator are not the same people. Anyhow. First off, I'd have to confess that it makes me happier than a fat kid on a teeter totter to see four out of five candidates worthy of my vote duly elected council members and legitimacy restored to the term mayor and council. Congratulations to each and every one of you. Don, you sorry piece of crap, you got elected. I'm the least elected, un-electable person in Oakridge. That said, in two thousand fifteen seems like a good place to start. September twenty, two thousand fifteen, three days after the effective date of Chief Alcides' resignation, the former city administrator introduced Mike Hanson as our interim fire chief. And that's directly from the minutes of that meeting. At the time, I didn't think much of it as the city administrator certainly has the authority to hire or fire staff, with the exception of council appointees. Last year, it came to light, by citizens, not council disclosure, that the former CA had entered into a contractual agreement without council approval and that is expressly contrary to signature authority delegated to the mayor by city charter of the state. The mayor shall endorse all bonds of city officers, all, and all bonds for licenses, contracts, like personal services contract, and proposals, and counter-sign all orders on the trajectory. Shall, according to Webster's and the Oregon State law, mandatory, required, not negotiable. Because guess what? The charter, decades and thousands of people wrote something that gave them your form, your function, your purpose from the citizens. That is guidance to the council, not from the council. Also last year. Oh, sorry. And there was a legal distortion that we could have got a veteran opinion from a high school English student. We no longer seek further employment with that training. Also last year, in the early afternoon hour, early afternoon hour of the June nineteenth, to be exact, I answered the doorbell used by my guest at the business. When I went to the motel, I saw a compact red pickup truck. I initially thought it was Jerry Short. Would have been good to channel Jerry. It turns out it wasn't Jerry at all. An off-duty, excuse me, an on-duty fire department volunteer that has never set foot on my property in twelve years with the goal of convincing me that four volunteers and one permanent staff member of the fire department were troublemakers and now convinced. Whereas the interim fire chief was a saint and had done wonderful things for the department. Ten minutes later, according to the EMS captain on duty at the time, this individual was engaged in a closed-door discussion with Mike Hanson, probably just a coincidence. Those five, I call them the Fat Five, Chrissy, Renee, Paul, Melissa, and Scott. The only one, less than a year later, that still has employment at the fire station, is a city employee that's been at it for twenty-seven years, longer than anybody. You're right, Chrissy, it's probably just coincidence. Nothing political going on there. And I remember the date because that was two days prior to Chrissy was ridiculed into horsing out a letter in three-minute increments. So I do remember that. Yeah, you know, and she's reading the statement and the, I'm a mayor, they kind of stole the seat. Didn't know who she was talking about, even though the complaint was about her brother-in-law investigated by a personal friend. How does that go? At this point, I should say that each of the five are personal friends. And I consider them family on a personal level and consummate professionals regarding their performance at first responders. My concerns are purely professional. My concerns are purely professional, not personal. Saying that, as far as Mike Hanson, we've spoken once, I recall, about a house fire on Hill Street years ago, about ten minutes. I don't know the man well enough to like him, dislike him. You know, I don't work for him, I'm not making any judgments personally. He was hired under false pretenses by a contract signed by someone not authorized to sign contracts. And there are ninety thousand reasons that I can think of to present these numbers that, you know, support the cause.
Dan, are you almost done?
I am.
I don't want to cut you off, but...
That's fine. Anyhow, they've been dismissed. And a document, signed by someone not authorized, terminate, hire, dismiss, whatever. The city administrator we have cannot do that without council approval, and that's in the charter. It's a violation, it's a contract violation, it's a charter violation. And realizing that questions are typically not addressed, the rhetorical question for me that begs asking is, how does this or any council expect to guide a city when they cannot adhere to the guidance provided them in the charter, and incorrectly execute a contract, or even guidance authored and approved by staff and council? Aside from that, thank you, congratulations. I wish each of you well in resolving the administrative chaos you've inherited through no fault of your own, and I hope that you will act with proactive due diligence in lieu of passive negligence that started this ball rolling in September twenty fifteen. And has been turned a blind eye and condoned for three and a half years.
Hey Dan.
Thank you.
Here, here.
Okay, council.
Could I try one? It's short.
Go for it.
I don't have a log in this fight. As a more or less neutral bystander, I can see three outcomes to this. One, that the five who are terminated, or whatever the term is this day, are provided with a practical, relevant, and workable way of getting whatever they need to be reinstated. Or two, after three and a half years, we say the experiment's failed, let's bid Mr. Hanson thank you for your services and adieu, and hire a new interim police chief or consultant.
Fire.
Fire chief.
Whatever, fire chief, sorry. Or three, shrug our shoulders, do nothing, and realize that decimation of the fire department is the logical first step towards privatization. Privatization, thank you.
Privatization.
That one. That's it.
Thank you. Okay, so I would like to leave like the last ten minutes for councils to discuss. If there's anything that hasn't been said, and you really need to say something, I'm willing to do a brief yes.
Does he have a letter? Can I read it?
How long? Okay, go for it. I saw several pages, so I was concerned.
Councillors, my name is Renee Edmonds, and I have been a member of this community for thirty years. I have roots here.
Let me read it.
My name is Renee Edmonds, and I have been a member of this community for thirty years. I have roots here, raised my children here, volunteer here, and I love this place that we call home. I have volunteered with the Oak Ridge Fire Department for approximately ten years now. I was a dislocated worker and decided to return to school to become an EMT. I have a sense of pride giving back to my community using my skillset. Helping people is a passion of mine. I know many people here in this community, possibly even been in their homes on the very worst days of their lives. The fire department used to be my second family. I enjoyed giving back, not just with medical skills, but with things such as the breakfast with Santa, Veterans Breakfast, and Safety Day, where the community was invited into the fire department. These events have now been repeated for the last two years. I have found myself avoiding the fire department now for several months. I do not feel welcome. I have had members of the fire department go directly to people's homes to try to discredit my integrity. The hostility that I feel is very real. It saddens me to feel this way, because I enjoyed picking up shifts at the fire department even after a full week of work. Now I have found myself terminated after many years of service. I have been offered to continue my training with Dexter Fire Department. I know that I will receive excellent training there. It just saddens me to have to lead my community for another. I would hope that council will step up today and address the issues being brought forth here tonight. I believe I was terminated illegally. Thank you, Renee Edmonds, EMT, intermediate, and Oak Ridge resident. Thank you.
Attached is my certificate that says that I...
Certification levels, active.
Active.
Through six thirty, twenty, nineteen.
I have copies.
Okay.
It's real short and sweet, I swear. I just wanted to ask him to resign.
That was short.
Okay, Chrissy.
I asked him to resign.
I have probably five or six letters here that people have asked me to read, much like Renee's and like David's. And unfortunately, I don't think time's going to permit to read them all. I know there's more fire department people back there waiting to read their letters as well.
And you have his background.
We probably all have a lot of things to read. I'm wondering if the council feels that it's appropriate that we talk about the contract being violated.
I certainly, I don't have any problem with council discussing the contract. And we can have a discussion as to them, and see where we want to go from there. I think this has been a very informative time, and appreciate everybody who has come. I appreciate that Mike Hanson has come forward and given us a presentation and tried to explain what is going on, and the whys, and the where, and the course, and what a framework around it.
Can you speak up a little bit?
But I think it's time for council to also talk about where do we go from here. You know, I am saddened, because I had hoped that after having this, we would be in a position to say, while we, you know, and I don't, and I don't say this casually, please. You know, while we, while we're saddened that this has happened, you know, we're all assured that everything is going well, and we're just going to move on here and make the best of it. I can't in honesty say that. So. Hand it to me, my dear. I can't read that. You have to. No, you can't, but I can't just read it.
Do you want me to do it?
It's, well...
Protocol.
It's up to you to do whatever you need, I can't read that.
I would like to make a motion to terminate.
Point of order.
For this point.
The charter, the charter...
Your recommendations happen.
State your point of order.
The point of order is that the charter states that anything has not brought work on the agenda cannot go forward. I have the charter amendment of this, or the numbers of it.
And she can make a point of order as a city reporter.
States no item should be placed on the agenda unless it is ready for council action or consideration. And also, A, the order of business on the agenda should be proposed by the city administrator and may be adjusted by the mayor at the mayor's discretion. And C, at each regular meeting of the council, the mayor and each council member may bring up items not on the agenda. This is not an item that was put on the agenda, therefore it is against the charter to bring forth motions. The reason for that is that at special sessions, when something is had, you stay to your agenda. Because otherwise, it's not been properly noticed, so that anybody who wanted to show up and comment on it or be a participant in that particular agenda item does not know it's on there.
Point of order.
Just a moment.
She's an employee of Michael Hanson, she can't make a point of order.
Back enough.
She has a conflict of interest.
She is a city recorder. Thank you.
But she's also over the LLC.
Your, your point of order, order is taken and upheld. Council, we cannot make a motion about this, but you can direct the city administrator to look into something. Whatever it is that you would like to do, and proceed from there.
Can't we add it to the agenda for Thursday? We asked for a regular meeting after the work session. We can put it on the agenda.
What is today, Tuesday, yes.
Today's Tuesday, so we can put it on the agenda.
You'll have your attorney there here.
Just a minute. We can add a regular session to our work session, and we can have that as part of the agenda.
Yes.
So what is it that you want to direct the city administrator to add to a standard working agenda for Thursday? Don?
To terminate, to add it to the agenda, to terminate the contract with MVHC LLC, and put an RFP out.
Wait.
For...
Whoa, 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 no, 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 you can only do one.
Can I make a friendly amendment?
Yes, please.
Determine.
So, can I make a friendly amendment to that, and you separate those into two motions?
Okay.
And... Her, her agenda items, not motions.
I'm sorry, agenda items.
So put it on the agenda item to be called for.
Agenda items. And I would remind council that staff needs the opportunity to look into what the repercussions are, and be able to give a report to you. This isn't something that can happen quickly. Because as council, you will want to know what kind of financial impact this will have, and what our next steps are. So keep that in mind as we move forward, okay?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. So. Did you get that?
I did, I, with all due respect, I think by Thursday is a very short time for an adequate staff report. And I would highly recommend that a staff report be produced by somebody with more experience.
I would, I would agree with that, and I would ask council to consider that. We have a normal staff meeting on February twenty-first. If you'd be willing to amend that.
That's a pretty big agenda on the twenty-first.
We can change the agenda on the twenty-first in order to do what we need to do, if that's what you feel, or move it on to March. I'm asking you to consider this. Would you like to do?
Put it on the twenty-first, it's got two of them.
What is, what is Dan about to say? Are you guys okay with the twenty-first?
I think it's better to give an adequate time.
Yeah, twenty-first.
The round is detailed, and there's much information.
So you'd like a staff report on the twenty-first, considering how we deal with canceling contracts or terminating a contract, and then moving forward. And at that time, it'll be on the agenda on a regular meeting, so that it can be
Addressed.
Addressed for the motion.
What happens in the meantime to these people that have been terminated?
When is that we...
Lose their termination, that's...
I, I think that if, I think that we can direct the city administrator, when he comes back, to ask that those all be put on hold until we have a chance to examine it.
No, they're effective...
Terminated, shenness.
They're already not members, they've already been removed from things. They've already been told to turn their gear, and it's been effective, it was effective as of Monday or Friday, right?
I have the one.
So are you okay with that? I mean, I cannot direct that, and neither can you. But we can, we have to talk to the city administrator about it. And he will be back the fourteen...
Well, it goes back to the topic of who directed these people...
Well, right now, it's not a matter of that topic, it's a matter of when we can do that. I mean, I have, I have a pro temp right now, you can't do that. So, we do need to have the advice of...
So he can't allow them to be terminated as well, though.
We do, we do have to have the advice of our city administrator. I would think that you would want to do that as a council. We are not that well-versed at everything that's going on, as is obvious. So let's not...
But so the question is, is that he cannot direct him to reinstate them, but then how was he able to direct them to terminate them?
That happened prior to Messina's.
Well, that's interesting, because I spoke with Messina briefly before the work session that we had, and he told me that he would not allow them to be terminated at this point. He actually said that he had an interview with a large group of volunteers, and he was very upset at the things he heard. And he said he was going to bring it to the council to speak to us in an executive session.
All right, well then let's...
And in fact, he told me that he didn't have the capability.
Let's take a center advisement then, and we can, um, no, I'm, all right, quickly, Audrey.
Just want to suggest you could have a special meeting when Messina comes back.
We could. We have a, we have a meeting actually scheduled for the thirteenth, which is to be a work session for our city engineer to talk to us about the water and get us educated about that. So we will be there at that time. We can add that to it if you'd like at that time, the thirteenth.
So add it to the thirteenth.
Thirteenth of February.
The thirteenth, to have a discussion about what we're going to do. And then the twenty-first will be weekend, and determine it.
What's that meeting at, here?
Yes. Both meetings are here.
So I just want to make sure council knows that that means in the meantime, all these people will not respond on emergencies. So if you have an emergency, or anybody does, we are this less...
Well, I think we also need to recognize that we have been responding to emergencies, and that's kind of an alarmist view, however...
Paul and Melissa are some of the top responders.
I understand that, but that's rather alarmist of a view, so...
No, it's not.
Just admit it. So, how about if I make this suggestion? We're kind of in a quandary here, because I don't know how to reinstate these people, because I can't. I don't know how to direct my fire, the fire chief to do that, because I also can't do that. So if, if I can ask the patience of the council, just a minute, Don, to go ahead and talk to the fire chief tomorrow, and talk to the attorney, and determine a way to do that.
A way to reinstate them?
Tomorrow, I'll call the attorney, to figure out how to reinstate them, or to, you know, just stop, stop it.
If they haven't been done properly, we need to get them there.
So maybe that our goal is that they can respond on calls tomorrow or the next day?
No, no, first I need to get an opinion on how to do it, and then I...
So we'll do that tomorrow.
I will do that tomorrow. And, all right, is that okay? May I do that?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, do I have a consensus with that?
We can, that's to reinstate these kids.
And then I will get back to all of you in the appropriate method. Don, did you have...
I was just going to point out that I'm, it's, it's in your paperwork there. The council has the authority to direct the pro temp, Messina, when he gets back, or Rick, while he's here, to hire fire discipline. So it would be a council action item.
Tomorrow with the attorney, I want to make sure that we're doing it right. As it is, we have other irons in the fire, and I just don't need to add one more to them until we get an opinion. Okay? Okay. Thank you, everyone, for...
Thank you.
I prepared a letter as well with some attachments.
Do you want to have the paper before this meeting starts? Thank you. Thank you. Rick?
Before you leave the meeting, I do believe that, I heard discussion about there should be two separate motions, and I only heard one motion. And that was the determination for the twenty-first, what was the second motion?
I don't think it was a motion.
Agenda item.
To reinstate, she's going to go to the attorney to find out what can reinstate.
RFPs.
I thought it was an RFP.
All that was RFPs, but that can be done on the...
So there's only one.
Now we done have.
That's what he wants to add to the agenda for the twenty-first. He's asking to add to the agenda.
So, we'll do that another time, so it's just the one
Just the one.
For the twenty-first. We have to take this in steps, because we can always do it.
But that's what he asked to do.
See, if you put it in what I passed, which you said, couldn't you do that?
All right.
What I said was, if we put termination, but what you said you can't, Suzie says you can't do that on this meeting.
Right, you cannot.
So if we do that on the third, and we come on on the twenty-first, and we do terminate, we can put, if he is removed, why can't we have the city administrator put RFPs out for the new fire chief?
So that we also, we need to do this on the twenty-first, because they need, staff needs time to prepare their reports, so that we can have that information available for them.
On the twenty-first.
On the twenty-first.
So both can be done on...
On the twenty-first.
That's, that's what Rick said.
Chrissy.
This doesn't make sense. You made a motion to terminate Louis Gomez. It was not on the agenda to terminate Louis Gomez, and you did it, and your council voted for it. And I sat here and watched it.
It was a regular meeting, I think is the difference. This is a special meeting, and you can't do it.
Is that the reason?
That is the reason.
It's a special meeting?
If it was done improperly, what happened? The charter, the code states that they can...
So that was done improper, the way they terminated Louis? Were you advised that?
No, it wasn't.
No, I'm not buying this. Not buying it.
At a special session, we have to stick to what is on the agenda. At a regular meeting, you can do that.
You can, at a regular meeting, you can ask for things to be put on.
Yes.
Yes.
Ad一类的date, because it still has, all of this...
Not一类的date.
Right, and we've already determined what we're going to do here. On the twenty-first. Okay. Is there any other current business?
I just want to, quick, real quick.
Okay, quick.
I'd like to thank this man I'm here. And certainly, he's not going to want to visit, but I got a seizure. He's a thirty-nine, he's a month of business, he's got a seizure, so I do appreciate all this. All right, and she's doing fine, she's got her own family going, all right? And I, this is what Dave says, on the job training, and I also know that just because we get a lot of hours logged, doesn't mean we can do our job specific because we all have our different gifts, what we've done in our life. I just asked that this here, over at home, I just asked that, that I guess, that we have professional transport for emergencies.
That we have professional, as opposed to not having?
Because of what's going on and I sent something here that, I mean, I don't know all the details, but...
Okay, so you're concerned that we don't have the transport or the coverage that we do?
That's all I ask for, because it's gonna happen, you know?
Yeah, we do.
And we used that, that many years ago and it was a good thing and I like that, but...
Yeah, no, I appreciate that.
There's, there are professionals on the fire department.
Yes, they really have, there are other professionals.
You know, like Mr. Shory says, we're down to eleven and we gotta have twenty-five and for fire and all the other things that are in those numbers and stuff.
I think we need to speak to that. We don't need to walk away from this meeting feeling as if we don't have coverage. We do have coverage.
Yeah, well, that's...
So there is that assurance, that isn't going away. We will still have response. We have professionals responding to you the way they should be. So it's not, you know, it's not that the fire department has closed its doors. It has not. We're still a valuable and experienced volunteer and professional fire department that doesn't change, that hasn't changed. The question here is, what am I doing, what am I trying to... The question here is, is, is specific to how the volunteer organization has been run and whether or not it has been run fairly and without bias and, and, you know, how we want to proceed from that. So, please, okay. Jerry, I said I would always call on you and just talk about that.
Appreciate that. I have clarification for the council. You're not terminating an individual, you're suspending a contract. You're terminating a contract. Any individual within that contract would be automatically terminated. When you talk about determining individuals, you're probably on the wrong page. You shouldn't be talking about dominating, terminating contracts.
Thank you for that correction. With that, just leaving you in the drawing.